Been removed from by the applicant.
Okay, so number 14, good, okay. Do we have any council members in the audience? Don't see any, but we always appreciate the service of our council members.
Do you want a motion for the approved revised agenda?
Yes, thank you. And by the way, it's my first, uh, my first meeting as chair, so I appreciate all the help I can get as far as getting through everything. Thank you. So do I have a motion for approval of the revised agenda? So move by Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Smith, and second by Commissioner Cotton?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We appreciate the work that our council members do. I don't see any today, but, um, and then, um, Robin, do you?
Yes. Just wanted to, to give some information about appeals. Pursuant to the provision of section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that the final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of cert. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of cert to the specific decision of the historic zoning commission. If you're approved for a preservation permit today and you're not the contractor, please know that it is your responsibility to make sure that the contractor has a copy of the preservation permit before beginning work. The permit includes items that require final approval and inspection requirements. The approved drawings are part of the preservation permit. Following the permit will save you time and money as enforcement of violations can sometimes be a lengthy and expensive process. The preservation permit is not the same as a building permit. No work can begin without the appropriate review and approval of the Metropolitan Department of Codes Administration.
Thank you, Robin. So the next thing is the consent agenda. And just for everybody in the audience, if you listen carefully, there are a number of projects. There are items five through 11 on the agenda. They're all separate projects that have been deemed to be, uh, ready to approve. There has been no dissension about those, no discussion as far as negative comments coming in. And so the staff is recommending that we consider those as one project for approval. Now, it is anybody on the commission, anybody within the public, any of you, if you hear of a project that you're opposed to, that you need to have heard by the commission, then make sure you raise your hand if you don't, and or shout out, because if you don't do that, then we're likely, likely to go ahead and approve it and your objections may not be heard. So that's where we are at this point in time. So, Melissa? Want to go ahead and present?
Ready? Okay, so items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the public or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. If there's a case on the consent agenda that you are in opposition to, please raise your hand when the item is called. Cases pulled from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. So again, please raise your hand if you were in opposition to any of the following cases. So we have 804B Shelby Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding. 1230 McChesney Avenue, new construction and addition to an outbuilding. 1133 Riverwood Drive, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding. 1412 17th Avenue South, new construction of an addition. 1001 Halcyon Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding with a setback determination. 122 Blackburn Avenue, new construction of an addition and outbuilding. 3910 Valley Road, new construct, violation, new construction of an addition. So I'm going to go back through these quickly. If you, if you are in opposition and would like it pulled, please raise your hand. 804B Shelby Avenue, 1230 McChesney Avenue, 1133 Riverwood Drive, 1412 17th Avenue South, 1001 Halcyon Avenue, 122 Blackburn Avenue, and 3910 Valley Road. All right, staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions finding the applications to meet the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Excellent, thank you, Melissa. Okay, you've heard the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Cotton?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cashin. All in favor? All opposed? For the next project, we have 1901 Capers Avenue. I am going to recuse myself from that project and turn it over to Commissioner Cashin.
As this is my first meeting as vice chair, please interject whatever you like if I'm doing the wrong thing. So I'll turn it over to staff.
This is, um, do you mind changing the slide to the pictures? This is a really great historic apartment building. Peabody Manor was constructed in 1923 and is significant for its architecture being designed by Henry C. Hibbs. Hibbs may be best known locally for his designs on the campuses of Fisk and Vanderbilt Universities, as well as the Nashville Electric Company. He came to Nashville in 1915 to supervise new construction at the George Peabody College for the firm Ludlow and Peabody and remained in Nashville with his own architectural practice until his death in 1949. Hibbs achieved particular note as a master of collegiate Gothic style, winning two AIA gold medals. He also served as the first president of the Tennessee chapter of the American Institute of Architects. But the construction of the manor is also important to the, um, to the boom of a apartment building across the country, but also in Nashville. Development of apartment buildings in Nashville increased substantially after 1900 alongside the increase in popularity of the automobile. At the time the Peabody was constructed, Nashville had more apartments than any other city in the South except for Atlanta. So staff recommends, uh, a recommendation to council of approval and adoption of the historic landmark design guidelines to apply to this property.
Thank you, Robin. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Robin? Is the applicant present? Yes, please come forward.
I've got some stuff written out and I may repeat some of what, okay.
Yeah, if you could state your name.
Yeah, Ross Edwards. I've owned the building for 22 years, I guess, something like that. Again, the apartment building was designed by Henry Hibbs and built in 1923. Hibbs was architect on numerous notable works, Tennessee and throughout the South and internationally. His work included over, I think, half a dozen buildings on Vanderbilt's campus, buildings on Mahary Medical College, Ward Belmont College, MTSU, Fisk University Library, the education building for downtown Presbyterian Church, the Stallman Building, Nashville Electric Service, and Skerritt College. Again, um, same thing. Nashville had more apartments when he built this than any, any city in the South except for Atlanta. You know, let's see, what else? Beautiful lot, I don't know if you can see, I think I support only the, the only mature trees in the neighborhood. It's right up behind, um, if you know where Pizza Perfect is on 21st and across from Village at Vanderbilt, which used to be a playground. Let's see. The amenities included electric ranges, innovative kitchens, and flexible floor plans. Over the years, the apartments have been home to countless social occasions and to notable Nashvillians include, including Ms. Lucy Gage, professor of education at Peabody College and a pioneer of child education in America. So, see if I have any questions? Yeah, but, you know, I, I, I think I've kept it pretty well maintained. So it's a, it's a personal thing for me.
Thank you very much. I will open public hearing. Close public hearing. Commissioners? Any questions, comments?
Yeah, a quick question. Um, did y'all reference the Fisk Library? There are only two that I know of, one was constructed by the, uh, the architectural firm McKissick and McKissick. Does he referencing, are y'all referencing the, uh, the John Hope Franklin Library?
I didn't have that building in my notes, so I'll re, defer to Mr. Stewart.
A lot of this stuff came from, um, architect, so I'm not quite sure.
Just for the record, the old library, the Carnegie Library, which is now a, um, is going to be an administration building. That was built by Calvin and Moses McKissick. Residents of Edge Hill and the first black architect firm in America.
Any other?
Yeah, I'd just like to say it's great to see property owners seeking out ways to protect their buildings.
Yeah.
Thank you, we appreciate it, we really do.
Robin, and I guess other members of, there were, uh, there's been some, there's been quite a bit of discussion in terms of determining designations. Maybe not quite a bit of discussion, but there've been some discussion about what our role is in that process. And I maybe for the record would like to reiterate what my understanding of that is, which is to determine eligibility and then provide a recommendation to the council where that decision is formally taken. So certainly we will deliberate. We, we do consider and deliberate its worthiness, but beyond that, um, that, that determination lies elsewhere for the, for the approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Well, I think that this property is more than worthy of, of, uh, of this designation. And I want to echo Commissioner Mosley's, um, comments about how much we appreciate you taking care of this historic property. And I make a motion to approve the designation of 1901 Capers Avenue.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Mahal, do I have a second? And a second by Commissioner Williams. All in favor? All opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. And I guess I will officially turn it back over to. Yeah, yeah, well, thank you. Officially turn it back over to Commissioner Stewart, Chairman Stewart. Oh no, please come back. I think Robin, anyway.
All right, next up is an application for infill at 1704 Primrose in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. Staff has issued an administrative permit for the demolition of this non-contributing house on the lot. This block is somewhat unusual because the lot widths and housing forms are very widely. This is one of the narrowest lots on the block at 50 feet wide. The proposed structure meets the base zoning setbacks on the side and rear. The front setback will align with the historic houses to either side. The feature outbuilding shown here is not part of this application. The historic context is varied, including one, one and a half, two, and two and a half story houses on lots of varying width and topography. Staff and the applicant worked together to arrive at the proposed height, width, and rhythm of spacing. The applicant provided a streetscape that helps to show the appropriateness of the proposal in context with the historic block. The proposed house is 33 feet from the highest point of grade at the front. The foundation height will be confirmed in the field and is appropriate to the context at approximately three feet tall. The width of the front is 35 feet four inches. Staff finds the massing to be appropriate to the historic context. Here are the side elevations. Staff finds the design to meet the guidelines for massing, materials, roof form, dormers, orientation, setbacks, and proportion and rhythm of openings. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with the standard conditions seen on the screen. The applicant is here, I don't know if he necessarily wants to speak, but he's available for questions. I'm also available for questions. He does want to speak.
Hi, I'm William Smallman, address is 2008 Cedar Lane. Thank you, Jenny. We definitely worked well through this one. It took a little bit to get the height down and get the elevation down, but we were able to make it work. And the one thing I want to just make sure how to handle in the future, I guess, is the elevation of the front porch. So I wanted, the goal is to be below, equal to or below the neighbors left and right as we kind of find that average. We have three feet on here as what's drawn, but I think there's wiggle room. If we draw a straight line from the neighbors' porches to be at four, we're going to try and be at three. But I just wanted, I don't want us to be stuck in a spot where we're at like three feet four inches basing it on a certain number instead of being the average like the guidelines are. Is that, am I right on the, the guidelines?
Maybe we could have had this conversation before, that's okay, but it's good for the, for the commission to hear, I think. Um, so I think there was some language, I was just trying to pull it up, that I put in the staff report about how, um, in the streetscape, let's see if I can pull it up real quick. So in the streetscape you see here, the porch height is lower than the house uphill and higher than the house downhill. That's what we're going for. So if it's three feet two inches, I think we can all live with that and agree that that would be appropriate. The three feet is about the average that we had measured, um, if we measured each house kind of from its own grade. So we felt like three was good, um, but given, and there will be some slope, there may be a little variation. So yes, I think a little more than three in the field might be okay, but we're going to want it to be hitting in between those houses on either side.
So that, I guess my question with that is, can we just measure in the field with a laser and say, here's this exact height? Here's this exact height, we'll be below it. Instead of picking a number that if they're off a few inches on this piece of paper and one's higher and the average is different, we just, we're measuring the real field thing of we are below the average.
I agree with Jenny, this probably was a discussion for, prior to the meeting.
Jenny was at it down for a little bit and then I was at it down, but it.
Yeah.
The guidelines are clear though, we just have to be below the average, right?
Well, the guidelines talk about infill being appropriate for the historic context. It doesn't talk about averaging the two porches. So, um, what you have before you is what the commission will be reviewing and, and deciding for or against. And then we can continue to work together as construction happens, but if need be, it might need to come back to the commission.
Okay.
So just keep in mind that whatever you give to them is what they are reviewing.
Okay. That works, but the idea of context would be, it wouldn't be a reason why we need to be shorter than the average of the whole street, right?
But again, it, it's not a set number, that it be the average. And so I don't want to try to debate and give you a new number here in the field, in the meeting. So what they have is what they can respond to.
Okay. All right, then let's go ahead and do it, but I would.
Thank you.
If y'all can have some flexibility for just acknowledging, following the guideline for us later, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, that's.
Well, and we appreciate how devoted you are to, to following within this and keeping with this. Make sure you communicate everything to your contractor and that, uh, and that he understands. And for any changes, especially for this one, uh, make sure that you, you touch back with the staff to make sure that, uh, that you're in good shape with that.
Okay, so we'll do, thank you.
Good. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
Don't want to drag this one out, but maybe to assist the applicant a little bit. It's just, there's a lot of things that I, I've seen historically at play in how, um, a porch meets the street. You don't want some lots, you know, you're sloping water back towards the house, and so there's a grade issue and that's where you start measuring from. And then there's some who want the porch to, with some slope, not have a step up to run right into the house. So that, you know, you, you've got a considerable amount of variance in there. And that's why I think at the meeting today, say in a hard 36 inches or, you know, the situation is pretty fact dependent when it comes to the field conditions. And I would just encourage the applicant to think ahead with their contractor, what some of those details are that we really can't know or see in these drawings, they're just not that level of detail. And, and I, I think you're on the right track in that following the guidelines and presenting a case that, that is within them is, I've always found the staff reasonable in that regard in terms of making a case for, uh, even in this image, some variation between where those things are measured and how tall they are. It doesn't need to contrast greatly, I think is something that's often said in the guidelines. So that's, that's what I would add to the conversation about the porch.
Other comments, motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve 402B North 17th Street with, uh, all applicable condition. No, no, I'm, I'm, excuse me. Jumped ahead. Make a motion to approve 1704 Primrose Avenue with the applicable, with all four applicable conditions.
Good. Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Mosley. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. So the, uh, item 14 was removed from the agenda, was withdrawn. And so we are finished with our, uh, agenda that is printed. We do have one item of information though, it's not a, for action by the commission, uh, but it is an item for information. Uh, you have received both an email and a hard copy, uh, letters from, uh, uh, planning director Lucy Kemp and from Bill Herbert. And, uh, talking about developments on Second Avenue. As all of you, all of us are painfully aware, on Christmas Day of 2020, there was a massive explosion. The four buildings that were most damaged are the ones that we're talking about today. Those buildings, we had a series of meetings in, uh, 2021. And, uh, here it is four and a half years later, and not much has happened with those buildings. They have been exposed to the weather and Metro Codes has determined that they are a hazard, uh, safety hazard and are, uh, pursuing demolition. And, uh, the, the ownership is a complicated issue. But, uh, but the letters that you have here, uh, really, um, discuss a lot of the issues that have been dealt with. And we also have Johnny Williams from Planning, who's been intimately involved with all this. We have Bradley Rick, who's, uh, the deputy director of the Codes Department. He's been involved in this as well since it is a codes action, uh, when you, when the city goes in and requires demolition. So, uh, if we have questions, uh, they're here to answer the questions. And, uh, and then, and I'm hoping that now that the right building is starting to come back together, I'm hoping that we're moving in the right direction to get the rest of this block, uh, pulled back together. And that following this will wind up being able to see more action as far as rebuilding. But, uh, and, and I will remind us, it is in an overlay, uh, the historic overlay has not changed. And so whatever is built back, uh, where these buildings were will come back to us. Any comments, thoughts?
I got some. So happy to see planning, so happy to see planning codes here, thank you so much. Cause you can hear what I have to say. I understand this has been a very difficult process with this family. And we were, um, on Second Avenue, very, um, disturbed by the fact that these properties sat empty for decades because of this family. I was very encouraged when old man Callan, uh, wanted to build us a hotel and then he died. So, and now you've got two family groups you're working with, so I understand. The first point I want to make is about the bricks, the Brick Industry Association, which I understand is the gold standard for bricks. And Mr. Pedago is a very well-respected gentleman, um, here. The first thing that came to my mind when I saw this, well, you got the brick industry and you got Mr. Pedago, Ally Cassidy, and they make bricks. And so it might behoove them to say that you can't use old bricks because we can buy new bricks, but that was passing, that was passing. I've got a picture here, I live in a building that was built in 1850s and it sat empty for decades as well. And there was a ton of, of, of moss and a tree growing out of the building even. And, um, and, but fortunately, the developer was Mr. Ron Gobble, who understands historic preservation and, and how to deal with these things. And, and I'm not saying that this should happen in this case, this case, I'm ready to see it go. I, I'm tired of looking at the bombed out buildings. But on the other hand, what Ron said that we, we did was we cleaned the bricks, we took them down, we put new bricks behind them and put the, the old bricks on the outside. And in the 18 years I've lived there, we've not had a problem. And so the only thing that I'm concerned about is the whole thing about Second Avenue is red brick. The thing that I love about Nashville is red brick. And so that was why I, you know, initially just. I was, I was afraid of what's going to carry through to other buildings on Second Avenue, uh, with this. And so I just thought I'd make that point. The other thing is there's an SP out, there's an SP on the property and, um, we're wanting to convert it to the downtown code, which I understand is, um, also going to stay with historic zoning. I don't know what we can do with it other than regu, you know, talk about the height. But, um, A, the AIA did a SPIG study after, uh, the bombing and determined that the best, that a great way to activate First Avenue is to have several entrances up and down that street. And so the SP required, uh, one of the smaller buildings, most damaged to go away. And there was going to be a, a walkway through with, with retail on either, either side. And so, um, if we get rid of the SP, um, then that might go away. And so I was just wondering, um, how important removing that SP and what the reasoning behind removing that SP might be.
Thank you for your thoughtful question and we, we share your interest and concern in having that connection through. I think in all of the conversations, uh, regarding, um, Second Avenue and First Avenue and really the Riverfront Park have been, and how do we, um, carefully think about connection and weaving the fabric of the city back into the river and that open space along the river? So a couple of things, I'm glad that, uh, Chair Stewart mentioned, um, that you all will see any development proposal for one, two, three, or four pieces of land here. And the downtown code, which is the underlying zoning that this will be changing to, um, is in the purview of the planning department. And so we would hope, uh, and I'll say, I'll say this two ways. Because of the fractured ownership, that's the primary driver for the rezoning. Because of the fractured ownership, the SP that is currently the base zoning cannot be built in, in fruition. And so each piece of land, the one and the three are stuck. And so our proposal in dialogue with the ownership, both ownerships, has been to rezone that back to downtown code, which would allow them to build under those standards with the historic zoning overlay standards on top of that. Or the three, or the one, or the three and the one could come back with SPs that are specific for their piece of land. But to kind of get them back to baseline, we felt that the downtown code was appropriate. I will say, but only when we had amended the downtown code to prohibit parking as a standalone use. So you will not be seeing any surface parking, parking garage proposals because the base zoning prohibits that in new construction. So the, the process for rezoning it to downtown code is moving through, uh, the planning department or the planning commission review process and ultimately council now. Any proposal that comes through either with a DTC or with a future SP would be reviewed by this body. That effect of changing the base zoning does not affect the overlay in any way and your jurisdiction in any way. The connection, I think, is very valuable to all metro entities. In fact, portions of the streetscape have been designed in anticipation of that connection. And so I would imagine regardless of the zoning mechanism, we will see that in a future proposal.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Of course.
I got another, I got a request. I will stay right here. Okay. So I moved down to Second Avenue a long time ago. And so I've seen a lot of the changes on Second Avenue. And I've seen what's disturbing most, most vociferously is the demolition by neglect. So I did, there are two buildings on Second Avenue, McFadden's and Hooters, who they're not, they're, they're empty. They tried to do something with Hooters, but I understand that's kind of by the wayside. And and so I think these buildings are in particular danger of, 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 we're losing them. We lost three buildings because of demolition by neglect to build the Wild Horse. We've lost Algernon, the property on the corner of Church and Second, where Algernon Blair somebody, something happened that caused a fire. And we've, now it's got a parking lot. Now I'm glad we're not going to have another parking lot. So I've seen this. And I looked into how other cities handle demolition by neglect. And they work very closely with codes. And there's quite a few cities that have stipulations that if we, if the codes thinks that the property is in danger, they can go ahead and the city can repair it, put a lien on the property and get their money back when the property's sold. And so I thought that was good. There's also a specific provision that, you know, a lot of people say it's an economic hardship. A lot of times that economic hardship is caused by the neglect. And so my request to you, planning, codes, Robin, is to see if we can come up with some sort of law that prevents losing any more buildings on Second Avenue. And, and, you know, like every, every city, every state has taken it. Not everyone, but I've got something here that shows, you know, the, the states and the cities that, that enforce this. And, and so that's my only other comment, which is actually a request. And it's actually with codes being so tied into planning and now with tied into us. I think that's the problem that they had more than anything was getting codes and, and zoning to agree. And I'm thinking that, or to, to implement any kind of things like taking over the property and, and putting a lien on it and stuff. So I think that there's a real good synergy right now that might be able to make this happen.
Commissioner Mahal, I appreciate your, your comments, and I would love to have any research that you have collected. If we are not already aware of it, I'd love to add it to our
I just giggled.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. And I do, if Deputy Director Rich would like to speak, I'd love to have him give you an update on the processes of the buildings you mentioned and kind of where they are in process. But no, that we, we share that concern. And beyond the downtown districts, there's certainly demolition by neglect and other overlays, and that's something that you all grapple with on a regular basis. So I appreciate you flagging us for that. And do you want to chime in? Okay.
Good.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Deputy Director Brady Rich with the Codes Department. I can speak more to the Hooters building, more so than I can the McFadden building. The Hooters building, we do currently have an abate notice on that. And actually with a, we're going through the demo hearing process. Not necessarily to demo the building. We're trying to get it stabilized to where it's at least safe, to where they can finish the streetscape work that's going on on Second Avenue. We prefer not to demo it if it doesn't need to be.
Thank you.
But we, but in order for us to get the owners to the table, that's the process unfortunately that we had to initiate. It's owned by a group out of California. There was multi, multiple tries to communicate and just can never get their attention in any way to come to the table. And they've actually retained local counsel, John Michael. I don't know if you remember, he used to be the zoning administrator, legal, he used to work for Metro Legal. He's a representative and, and they are working now to get a GC under contract to go in and stabilize the building. When the, when the bombing first occurred, Hooters had taken upon themselves to get a general contractor to go in and stabilize what the, what the engineer had recommended. Unfortunately, they did not get a chance to complete the stabilization before they were basically told to vacate the premises. So they sent a cease and desist order to the general contractor. Basically, he went in and stabilized the roof portion, which has just been sitting there for four and a half years. And it's not really stabilizing much anymore. So that is the current status with the Hooters building. And I do know with McFadden's, Michelle Sculpel with MDHA has been trying to get, again, it's the Callan family, who's the ownership group of that, has been trying to get them to do something with that building as well. And unfortunately with us, we normally don't get involved until somebody reports, you know, files a, a request for service with us, and we have not seen anything come across. But we've been more than happy to go in and take a look at it. So that's kind of where we're at with those two locations.
Okay, thank you so much. And I, I just wanted to point out that the bricks that most of those buildings were built by was built by your boss, Mr. Herbert, his family. So I'm sure he loves those bricks as much as we do. Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners?
I'd like to get the, the trophy for mastery of the obvious for this meeting just by seeing this, but I I think to summarize, the regulatory framework that's in place right now is a real impediment to seeing any progress on these properties. That's, that's kind of the summary I'll take from what's been presented here in the, in the letters. And so rather than just hope that something would happen, this is more of a proactive, it seems to me this is more of a proactive approach and certainly the path that planning, codes, and Metro Legal, I'm sure with heavy involvement, is taking is to, is to at least not us, have, have us be part of the solution, or have the collective us, being, you know, metro organizations in concert, be part of the solution for the problem. So I, I feel like overarching, that's kind of what's going on here if my eyes are, are with me. So as much as I you know, as we don't want to see those buildings come down, I'm certainly willing to consider the benefits on the other end of, of bringing vitality back to the entirety of Second Avenue that was damaged. I'll think, I'll pick up a trophy at the end.
And I think, I think we do have regulatory obstacles, but I think the actions that I'm seeing are ones that are trying to find a way for, to, to open the path for ownership of those buildings to be able to move ahead. And that's been, I think, ownership issues have been some of the major obstacles here. And we have over three dozen buildings that have, businesses that have reopened and, and moved ahead. So I think, I'm, I'm hoping that this will allow some more of those buildings to come back to life and to, to be put back. The thing I do like, it's great having all three entities in the room together and being able to have codes and, and planning and historic all together here to work through this issue. We appreciate that. Any other comments about this?
I have a comment, not, not specifically about this, but about Commissioner Mahal's approach from other cities. And I would really challenge zoning and the Planning Commission. We have an outstanding staff on the Historic Zoning Commission, and I think that is something that should really be investigated. I think absolutely demolition by neglect. And I'm not sure, after you mentioned it, I wondered, why are we not doing that now? So anyway, I would encourage you to look into that.
Okay. Any other comments? Well, that's the end of our business. So the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
I would, if I could, just very quickly, I'd like to introduce Emma, who's taking notes for our minutes. Thank you very much for being here. And Hannah Zeitlin with, used to be with council and is now with Metro Legal and will be with us a good bit in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.